March eighteenth.
Public order. Mr. Bafferoza, here, Commissioner Livermore.
Here.
And Nelson, here, Mr. Rondo, here, Commissioner Seaver, here.
What do you need?
I proudly salute Susan By of the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Open up for brief public comments.
Anybody?
Lieutenant Patrick Miles, Sheriff's Office, I think Joel sent you guys a copy of the third quote I didn't have for you guys last board meeting. Apologize for that, I just got it last Thursday. From that company had lengthy conversations, he asked a lot more questions and that both his contractors recommended the door frames being upgraded because of how old they are. They didn't believe they could be retrofitted. I know Southern Folgers didn't have any concerns when I brought those up to them, but this company said they just did a jail in I think Ohio and they had replaced the door frames. And with this quote, they also added an intercom system, which the old one on the old side of the jail is broken all but maybe two or three channels and you can't really communicate. It's one way inmates can't get a hold of us, so if there's a medical emergency, what an emergency that fact. They either have to wave at the camera and we gotta be seeing that in the camera when it comes up, or they gotta kick the door. Those doors are really old, they're not fragile, but they bend and twist. Actually Captain Walter about good examining that with those locks, when it's shown before sometimes the pin pops out. You ring off it or you go to close it and it bounces back up because the doors will actually wiggle, shake.
It unlocked.
So when it goes to hit the pin and then from the door bouncing, the pin misses, the door bounces back out. I don't know if that may be a similar issue even with the brand new locks and they also said these system may integrate with the new Bosch cameras hopefully we'll be getting later on. The code is substantially a lot more. So I don't know how I could argue that to you guys because it's probably two to three times more, but for safety of the facility, um, emergency response and that it is a lot better. And I don't know if down the road we'd have to end up replacing the door frames then, and if we do, it probably needs the locks replaced again. So that's all I really got for it.
Do you have anything to add there, sir?
Just that, I'm telling it's done a really nice job with the giving us what we need and um, I think you hit it on the head. It's it's a safety issue for for the community and for us, our staff and any inmates. And uh, I would, I would strongly recommend go with uh Lieutenant Bell's recommendation.
And Board has any further questions? Usually this um, my contact to this company gets back with me same day or next day.
What's the name of the company?
It is Accurate Controls Incorporated. And my contact is Jason, he's the Chief Development Officer.
Where are they off?
Wisconsin, if I remember correctly.
I didn't know we didn't put anything in the budget for that.
Right.
If that is, that will hurt us budget wise. If, if I may, Pam, does this fall under an MMRMA?
Yeah.
That'll take about fifty thousand something.
We're hoping to get fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. So we were already, that's the only reason we were looking at doing this in the first place and that would have put us in with the other.
The plumbing and.
The other ones that we had though, it would have cost us around sixty thousand to do this where usually means the other two quotes around a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Um, with that fifty thousand, with that sixty thousand with this that you're talking about, it's gonna put us up or we gotta put in two hundred.
Right.
We don't have one. We.
Was it that high?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was about.
You didn't read the. About three hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't.
Spot on.
They didn't, the, I believe it was like a hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty-five thousand.
Then you get down to the bottom because they don't quote the locks in the top. Then they quote each doorway at twenty grand.
Yeah, approximately twenty grand doors because they're doing, they're removing.
Nine doors.
New frame.
Right.
So it is substantially, it is more.
They bet out nine sets. Bet out nine locks.
Be nine total.
So I couldn't, I, well, I wasn't coming up with nine either, but that's what the original.
Well, that's okay.
And the question here is.
Yeah.
Do we?
I'm, I'm coming up.
Hold off altogether? Do we hold off altogether and is this something that we should really think about and maybe put it off for next year in the budget? And go this way and not waste a hundred thousand dollars this year? Or, you know, that's what we gotta look at.
I'd say it's strictly a gamble because the locks could last till next year. We might be able to find used parts till next year. It would be the better fix because you're updating the whole entire frame, door, communication.
They said, you know, where do we do, do we take a hold on this because we, I don't feel comfortable putting that much money in.
Not three times.
We didn't put that in the budget, that put us right down to where I don't feel well myself.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's something definitely to plan for. I, I understand the benefits of it greatly, I mean, I.
Isn't the door locks, this is the one where we've had many quotes go out.
And it's, you never feel it on.
Uh, yeah, we would have to, but this, that's up to the board.
But this is the one that we've.
No, that was the roof, that was the roof.
That was the roof that they don't, this is the first time we bid the locks.
Yeah.
This, okay, I was gonna say which one was it that we did? I was like, this, if we have to send him out for bids, are we even gonna get anybody to bid again on him? It's the other one I thought.
I think we can discuss that in for the consent agenda.
The only thing I could add to if it is pushed back further, the growing monetary budget in the jail, we could see I using a portion of that then towards this also to help cover costs. And further out, it would gain more, so there'd be more from that. If that would be helpful.
I don't know what the rest is, but I think. I think it's something that I, I really appreciate Lieutenant's uh work, work on this. Um, and I know you guys understand it, but I, I get the, the financial inevitability, maybe it's something we can meet in law enforcement down the road.
Uh, that's what I'm wondering, maybe we should.
I think we should table.
We'll table this, we'll pull it out of the consent agenda and maybe discuss.
We should.
Again.
At first, I think that's proper.
The ground, yeah.
Discuss where we can find the money and come up with some ideas.
Right, and really, sure.
I, I totally agree with that and we'll have a plan going. Like, like Lieutenant said, this quote didn't come in until Thursday.
Yeah.
That's.
And I'm afraid we're going with the other one that.
Those other ones might come down.
That's all.
Yeah.
And then have to.
Right. Right. All right.
Thank you.
Six B.
Which I even remember is. Next. Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Brief public comment, advice? Yes.
Roy, you go, can Mary? I just want to let you fellas and ladies know that I really think the wave of the future is uh solar power. And uh, I wanna point out that, that the uh Elder Delta Electric Cooperative only charges forty-five dollars a month. So that you can keep power, doesn't matter what your bill is as far as kilowatt hours go, but it's forty-five dollars a month. Service against anybody who has lines and equipment into their house or property. And that's fairly expensive for no power in return. And uh, uh, I really think that, that you should consider uh looking at solar power by this commission more carefully. Uh, and uh, look at it in the future for big buildings and uh, public buildings in the future. Uh, I believe that it would be cost effective if you actually studied it. And I've been studying it now for a bunch of years. Uh, I think it's becoming more and more uh user friendly. And uh, if you can set up agreements that if you generate more power than you're actually using this month or this week or this date, it goes back into the grid, but the, the, the grid rate is quite a bit lower than you actually pay per kilowatt hour. Uh, that you'd get back, but maybe that's possibly uh, a negotional, negotiable item. And uh, uh, I think in the future, uh, probably the rate that, that the power company pays the landowner individual who has the solar collector, uh, who's putting money in, putting power kilowatt hours into the grid. I think that that rate will probably go up in the future, so I, I don't think you should diss, diss it. I think you ought to study the hell out of it. And uh, uh, our taxpayers in this Elder County, uh, maybe could benefit by a few uh areas of solar panels on properties and on buildings and areas around the Elder County. We got lots of land, uh, that we're not getting a whole lot of tax dollars from. Especially if you can find a way to stick it on some state or federal properties and put a big solar array, uh, it'd be worth our while. I'd like you to consider that, thank you.
Thanks.
You got solar on your place?
What's that?
You have, you have those working for yours.
I don't have it yet, I've been studying it. I haven't, I haven't made the investment to put it in.
Right, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, I understand that.
We don't own that much land, the county doesn't.
On the other hand, you got buildings.
That's right.
And a lot of buildings in other municipalities have uh solar panel down them. They must be doing something good, otherwise they wouldn't put them.
I think a lot of it's political myself.
Well, I don't think so. I think it's too political.
We studied that two years ago, it wouldn't pay.
Yeah.
For putting on this building.
Any other class comments? Okay, agenda. Don't care if everybody would like to move number eight up to um, number six? Five point five call. Take that motion?
And remove.
Yeah, and remove item B from the agenda.
Yeah. So. What, on item B, do we have a timetable? That these locks in this, he said, kick the door and it.
We need to.
We'll look at it. It should go through buildings and grounds again because they got a lot of discussion to do of how to pay for it and stuff. But we don't wanna leave it go for two years.
No.
And uh.
Well, look at it.
We should have a timetable on that.
Should we have?
Well, our next meeting is the first Tuesday of.
For the three Aprils committee meetings and bring it back up again at the committee hole in April.
The next meeting will come up on.
Maybe the whole.
Okay, okay. Then let's put that in there. Because if you got a cell that won't lock.
The grant has to be in by April tenth, but we're gonna have to wait till the next one comes around.
Well, then maybe we should. The committee might have to have a early meeting, maybe. Buildings and ground wanna have a meeting if you're coming up sooner.
We're done.
First, it's Tuesday.
Right, but when is our?
Second, we're elevating. Always gonna have them on the night.
Or you can vote, or. And we can vote on it, right?
Right.
She's got.
Pam knows what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not watching.
Yeah, office everything, just things ready, there has to be submitted by the.
And then this will be meet right there, right? Is that all we're doing? If we have a rather worse, hey, we meet, right? Me news, gentlemen.
Yeah, we meet on April second for the committees.
Okay.
And then eight, eight.
You said when you had that on here, right?
Yeah, we have ten.
That's okay, time review, if we have an agreement on the tent.
For the eighth.
So review making? Yep, I, I just don't wanna leave it for a year and the doors are locked. I don't wanna lose the opportunity.
Yeah.
A dollar grant.
Yeah.
That's true.
So what was the day guys?
Uh, we're gonna have, it'll be on the committee meeting on the second.
Second, April second, correct?
And then back at the regular meeting of the eighth.
Let's go to action item on.
Yeah, we can make an action item. We had a.
Motion on the second.
Motion second, roll calls.
Mr. Bafferoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Could you read that back Joel, so make sure the dates are in there?
We're gonna amend the agenda to move item eight to number six and remove the consent agenda item B to be discussed at the April second. You know, facilities committee meeting and voted on, have to committee the whole and he voted.
Thank you.
If I play five, Sheriff Rock sent life saving awards.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it just takes black lines. It's uh, my duty and honor to be here tonight on behalf of the Sheriff's Office of the County, you know, in twenty EMS. First, I have life savings awards to uh, five brave individuals, five heroic individuals that I believe uh directly saved the life of a very good person. Um, this one, we, this is our second set of life savings awards we, we gave it out in our last couple of weeks. Our EMS crew, our citizens in the community are doing great things helping people. And uh, these are just awesome things. Um, this one hit more home to me probably than anyone I've been part of because they're good friends of ours. Um, the family have been good friends with my mother and us for years. So this one was much more uh, thank you Dean, much more hit home for me. I asked the family to be here tonight and I'll just give the crowd a, a brief uh overview. Um, on January eighteenth, approximately two ten PM Elder County Dispatch received a nine-one-one call from a female subject advising that her mother was discovered unresponsive with agonal respirations. Deputy Will Seymour took the nine-one-one call. Deputy Seymour remained calm and instructed the daughter to initiate CPR and continue, and continued to do so until the arrival of our ambulance service. Advanced CMT Cody Grohovak responded from his home. Close to, um, where Mary Alice Merk live, he responded from his home. After hearing the dispatch information. Elder EMS crew, paramedic Kyle Lancor and EMT basic AJ Scher Schmidt responded shortly thereafter. The crew followed the daughter, Crystal Pupour in the residence performing CPR on her mother. The ambulance crew then took over and performed advanced life-saving procedures to continue care. The crew was able to get a pulse back. After EMS transported the patient to work at General Hospital, Mary Alice Kavanaugh is now later discharged and is back home. Has even brought documents to the Sheriff's Department. We would like to recognize the following. Mary Alice's very heroic daughter, Crystal Pupour, please come on. Deputy Will Seymour. EMT specialist Cody Grohovak. Would like to offer this with Mr. Grohovak. This is Cody's, I've been at the sheriff's office thirty-four years and I've never been awarded one of these and all the things we've done on. And I've done, this is Deputy Grohovak's third set of life savings awards that he's gotten since I've been a sheriff. So um, Cody, this is amazing, your shoulder's gonna start to get a little heavy though. He said he's got a big heavy cannon fit through the door. Uh, our paramedic who was supposed to be here today, he got called out on another one, he's working the ambulance right now, Kyle Lancor, our paramedic Kyle Lancor. And last but not least, our EMT AJ Scher Schmidt. And TV six asked if I would get a picture of you guys and Mary Alice and Mark, would you like to come up with us and get a picture with us, please? Um, TV six wants to do a story on the webpage and um, cookies were good or, no, sandwiches. Really good.
Subs and lifesavers and.
Yeah. So I know you guys get a lot of different things at your board meetings, a lot of times it's negative.
I know.
A lot of times we're talking resolutions and politics tonight, we celebrate life. And that's what these fine folks have done, so thank you for your time, I appreciate you guys. These are the reasons why when you get to uh, stat comments and I'm always the most long-winded of everybody because of employees that we have working for this county, they are the best at what they do. And um, I am so proud and so honored to be your sheriff, working with great people like you and great citizens that will have the courage to stop and provide help. So it's not always John, so it's my honor, so thank y'all, appreciate everyone.
Can I just tell them they don't have to stay?
Yeah.
Guys can go.
Still a little totally thrilled.
That's why I'm moving out. That's why I'm moving out for you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Angie.
Real quick on that, I did listen to the nine one one, it's almost nine minutes long from the time the daughter stayed on.
Yeah.
And had they, and Will stayed calm. I actually got teary listening to the, to the nine-one-one and everybody did everything and her daughter was amazing. Because if that was my mom, I don't, even as a medic, I don't know that I'd stay that calm, so.
And also to a strong commendation to the local firefighters that helped on that scene. Um, you've seen township fire department members for their help and assistance. I seen was big, mutual aid we have, we work together, really, really good. Police, fire, ambulance and our, our systems work well together. This was perfectly amazingly well done.
And I thought I'd say to it, you see this, but you don't see the day-to-day how many lives they actually save. Our ambulance crew that don't get recognized, that's not as open as this, I mean, it's the daily.
You know, you're right, we have great things, I look at Roy and I think of his, his township, Matthias Township, the Rock River Township, our first responders in that area. They're, they're the lifeline before we get there. Your first responders, they stabilize everything before we get there.
Yeah.
And there's just, there's heroes all over our county and they truly are.
Well, I, but we as a board, every, I've been on here for like twelve years, always tried to get, choose the best equipment we could get you.
No question, and I will say unequivocally, this board has been amazing with the sheriff's office and with the equipment we need to do our job. And I thank you, each and every one of you on this board, because you do, you take great care of our department and allow us the ability to go out and do what we do for the public. So thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so now we'll go back to consent agenda, A through S, any minus B. Any questions?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
As a minute, yeah.
Do you have a second? You got a second? Roll call? I do have a question though, okay. Did we, didn't we discuss the board policy with this or didn't we? The board policy's still getting.
Yeah, but it's still.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't see it on here, that's why I asked.
Yeah, everybody's gonna take another look at it.
Yeah, that's a working product.
These two are gonna give you an eye out, their eye, their thoughts for our next meeting, so we can try and include everybody in the board.
No, we discussed it, I didn't see it on here, so. We can go forward.
Commissioner Bafferoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Number seven minutes, committee the whole minutes, February twelfth and Board of Commissioners meeting minutes, February nineteenth. Anybody have any questions or changes on that?
Got a motion to itself?
I'm going to move to the second.
I'll, I'll sparkle. Roll call?
Mr. Bafferoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Yeah. Then Rebecca, Vietnam Service Officer to discuss veterans' millage language. Three minutes starts now.
So since we, I started in this office in twenty nineteen, we've actually been running in the negative every year. The reason why we've been able to do that and continue to operate is because the VSO before me, he worked four minutes hours and it was on the salary. Cost rising, you know, the office expenditures, we just own up, salary is part of it. But we have the same amount of funding we've had for a very long time, so we operate on a tenth of a mil, so it's forty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars this year. And so in that, this year we've had to cut back a lot of our veteran services that we've in the past been able to help, so um, we've looked at operating, running our own mil um, for the office and we're proposing a, up to a tenth of mil. On March, on Thursday, March fourteenth, our committee met, really discussed like, are the needs being met of veterans? Is there any new services that we need to add in? We just, you know, we've met with all the veteran organizations, they feel like the needs are being met with the veterans. There's a few little things I think we'll tweak, but really we're just asking for an increase in our operating expenses, so we're not running in the negative. So we figured it up, it's about fifteen thousand, um, five hundred, I think we're running negative and that would just bring those services back up, things that we've cut the last year or two, to assist veterans um, in the community and then just cover those rising expenses. So the millage I don't think will actually be a tenth of a mil, I think it's gonna be a point zero three is what we're gonna ask for in twenty twenty-five. If it passes, so this will be on that August ballot. And so we'll continue to operate on the tenth of a mil that the county commissioners approve, that's in the state law legislature. And then this would be in addition to that, just to, so we continue to operate in the office.
You need our.
Need the like.
Do you need our vote on that to be able to put it on there or you don't need us to make any motion or anything?
I think the language has to be.
Approved. We have to, we have to prove. Okay, and then each year you have to, we give like any note. Well, the board, it'll be on the agenda to approve one point three. Or one point five.
Right, whatever it is for that year.
Why we, Elder County, we got one of the highest percentage of veterans in our county in the state, or I think probably close to the nation.
What was it, recall with like ten?
Over ten.
Over ten percent or per capita.
Yeah.
I believe it, we, it's, we should at least put it out there for vote.
Oh, yeah. You're not really voting out of town, yeah.
But.
Against it, so.
But they uh, I, I see on the news, they got petitions out now to stop property taxes. That's always been a thought. They got, they got a um, outfit out there, where do you sign them? I all disabled that threat now, can you get no property taxes? Yeah, but I'm talking about the state's got a petition out there where they wanna, so many people have to sign, we'll go on the uh November ballot to take property taxes off. Now, they have no, I just heard that a, a week ago. I don't like property tax, but it doesn't pay.
But that's, yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you there.
We can get some money.
Coming down the line.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye. See you later. See you.
She said bye.
Other cop savings, you don't have to hire a treasurer or anybody to go with them.
Um, so.
Yeah. Anybody have questions on that? Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, Becky, is there a, like, are you aware of any restrictions on county officers advocating for this knowledge? I know in other villages, we're kind of restricted on what we can say publicly.
I, I believe on this one, we're able to, we're hoping if it's approved by the county commissioners, do some open town hall meetings. Because I think there's going to be a lot of questions, how we've continued to operate in the past without a millage. And now we're going to ask for one. I know Aldrich County has not put forth a new millage in many, many years. I mean, Darlene didn't even know how far back it was. We've done lots of renewals. But the not, it's been, she said, many years since there's been a new village introduced.
Okay. Are there any, are you aware of any restrictions that they'll have publicly? Okay.
I can check.
That'd be a good idea. Sometimes you're not allowed, like the school villages, you know, the school personnel are not allowed to say vote yes for this village. Oh, they.
Not forced to.
They can in bar, but they can in public. Wow, really? But I don't, I don't think for this veterans, then there'll be that kind of oversight.
And if there is, you know, there's committee of seven that said that they would literally go door to door knocking if, you know, need be. And most of those guys are Vietnam here, so I'm hoping we don't get to that.
Come on now. Me and Rick are both there. What are you saying about us?
You know.
Make the pushers what I'm saying.
You have to bring the bus.
What, what is the average of county, what is their village for the veterans? You, you know, I know loose county don't accept that state grant.
They do now.
Or do they?
Yes, they're taking that state grant and they're running a full mill. So they're about a hundred and five thousand dollars um, for their mill.
And then you're talking when you're done two tenths of a mil, right?
Yeah, if they draw the entire.
If we draw the entire.
They're probably not going to even draw that.
I don't even think we'll draw that. Something.
Yeah, figuring less than half.
Right. Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
We'll assess the resolution and we'll get.
One second.
Mr. Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Number 10, cost savings, revenue idea. You might need it.
Keep that here, only.
Property tax, that really. Anybody got any notes? Well, number 11 unfinished business, none? Any resolutions besides deficit elimination? I am, that is. Any questions on that to a treasurer?
Well, I have a single letter in there where if we don't do this resolution, they will be holding our state funding. So I set up this resolution. It's on M I D C. They were in the whole, the negative in twenty twenty two, sixty thousand, two hundred and forty, forty dollars. So this is what they require of the board, the county. This is what happens if you don't amend budgets at the end of the year.
So we did, what we did today, all this amendment for twenty twenty three.
This doesn't happen.
If this wasn't done in twenty twenty two.
Right.
Right.
But we're getting a straight note.
That's great notice of intent to withhold state payments. And we had thirty days to do it. So kind of a timeline.
Any other questions on that?
So it means sixty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. What, what deficit, what does that mean?
That means at the end of twenty twenty two, they spent sixty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars more than what was budgeted. So I had to do all the revenue and expenses from twenty to twenty three to show them at the end of this December thirty first that they were in the black. And then they wanted explanation of why their budget was a hundred and eighteen percent increase. So I have had to add that on there due to state grant increases for wages, benefits for employees. Contractual wages for social workers and increase in investigative costs, training and bail. Hopefully they like that explanation.
I think we're getting to the point where the past is almost gone. And we're caught up in everything.
Yes, we won't have this again then.
No. No, because we corrected.
That's why I changed like this, all this here, this is correct and everything from twenty twenty three. So it is, they're low.
So if you don't get another notice from the state that says we're not going to pay you.
Correct.
Yeah.
I like that motion.
Oh, support. Roll call. Mr. Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mini reports. Rick, you got anything?
Not, nothing since the last meeting.
Uh, had upcap last Friday. That whole property tax thing, there was definitely, oh, there was at least two commissioners from the eastern end of the U P that have already tried to run up against, they got a lot of people pushing that really hard in their areas. Or again, to do away with.
Property tax, personal property tax or physical property tax?
Uh, physical property, like your land product.
Yeah.
Where we draw our funding from. And as he said, no.
Shut down, sorry.
And that's what he, that was their point was that.
Still the nine one one millage and the ambulance.
They're pushing that, but they're not offering or explaining to people that, oh yeah, it sounds great. You're not going to pay property tax because well, all your services are going to go away.
Right.
Yeah, they're not, you know, so that was the point that was brought up is that we may need to start, as things progress, we may have to start putting some educational things out there just so that people realize that. There, there really is a, yeah, I don't like paying taxes either, but you know, I like having a wonderful ambulance service to take care of me when I need it.
Yeah.
I like when I call nine one one and somebody answers. So.
Yeah, there's no solution. I haven't heard a solution.
No, all the, all the notions that I call them notions because none of them made any sense to replace. And that's the problem is you have people saying, well, we should just do away with that. But they're not offering anything to replace the money that, you know, that's, that's what these couple of counties run on. So something to keep our eye on. There's definitely some. He said it's a pretty serious push this time. They've tried before, but they've got a little more steam behind them.
Galveston County finds, our people like to take care of each other. We'll come up with the money.
Yeah, and then just upcaps got a couple of, they got like one new program that should be rolling out here pretty soon. They're looking, um, they've also got one, I've actually got to send the lady an email. There's two different food programs that they run. One kind of through the feds, but then there's a local one where they pick, you know, everybody realizes it's about the fruits and vegetables and that stuff. There's also one for dairy and meat that they run, but it has to be from small regional farms. So I'm going to send them, I know, I know of a couple of people that aren't on their list that they work with that actually have meat. So hopefully maybe they can make a connection there. And what they do in that program is not only is it, people basically get like vouchers for buying foods, like with the vegetables. But they'll also help the farmer. They've got a nice YouTube video that they put together that show, you know, like some of these produce farmers. You know, they could, they got all this produce, but they can't keep it because they don't have enough refrigeration. So they give, they have grants available. So the farmer gets a new walk-in cooler. Well, now they can keep this stuff and they can get to more people because it lasts longer. So pretty, they go through, they do a lot more than I thought they did.
What's the name of that organization?
It's all run through upcap house.
Upcap.
Piles of programs. What did they? Millions of dollars that they don't necessarily raise, but comes through from this grant, that grant, and then helping this program. Yeah, so as soon as we get some more information, I'll pass along. There's some interesting things in the works. So that's it. It's the only other outside committee meeting I had. How?
Mine are all coming up this week.
Thank you.
I was all, I was Eldrick County Fairborn meeting and it's winter time, so it's not a lot.
Coffee, please.
Yeah, coffee. Coffee and BS.
I haven't had anything that I know of. Correspondence, I see we have one. Um, other than yours? Sure, the loops, the references, the others, various. I didn't think you wanted to bring the last meeting, other items you had. And then resolution, I think I sent that afterwards from Washington, uh, supporting the protect my kids bill package. Board comments?
You know, once again, thank you to all of our emergency service personnel. I, I'd love to write you a check for the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fix the jail, but we're going to have to do some work on that.
Yeah.
You know.
Just as long as you don't arrest him for this.
Well, you sound like, buddy. I don't have no time. You have much trouble. Yeah, I will. Yeah, then I'll have to deal with Mr. Steinoff because I will not get a good check. The bank will reject that. Those amounts. So thank you all once again. And thank you Becky for all the hard work that you put in for our veterans.
That's a board comment. Personally, like Becky, I hope that, I know it does go through. I think it's good for our colleagues. Absolutely. Um, good for our veterans. I think you do a wonderful, wonderful job.
I'll agree with that. I'm one of your veterans for it.
She's got lucky. She's done a great job.
And I'm glad she decided to stay here for, with us for another 10 years.
It's going to take her that long to train the new person.
Yeah. And I'd like to congratulate the sheriff's department that, that was, that's pretty darn nice.
Yeah.
I don't have great news. Um, just talking to some of the Auterein Township and some other ones. Kind of irrigate what happened last week, the clerks and everything that's been going on. I kind of got a little more information on that. Um, having a lot of, the clerks kind of working together to try to train other clerks and the pile on of work. So just keep in mind how much work they're doing in usual. And um, I don't know, I, I heard that there may be some changes in Auterein Township in our, their placements of people on their bullet there. So there might be some waves coming. There might be some new faces.
New ain't bad often. New's not always bad.
But that's just kind of what I've been doing. And then, yeah, I'll say it. I hope that knowledge goes through Becky. I don't think that the veterans get enough, see enough. Um, I, you do an amazing job and you do that benefit. I know that that means the world to them. Um, I wish we could do more for them in more programming. So I'm for it. Thank you. And thank you for putting in the time and work to bring that to them.
Good night.
Go ahead.
Well, on the nine day voting, early voting, how many voters voted?
Seventy five.
Seventy five. I had a, uh, on an email from uh township down in St. Clair County, Grant Township, had nine people in nine days.
Feel fortunate. We actually were pretty, pretty decent.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Yeah, because we got almost double percentage what Delta County as a percent. I don't, honestly, I don't like it, but if they're going to do it, it's advantage of it. I voted.
Well, isn't it mandated? Don't you have to do that?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But we actually.
They're mandated if they run the nine, but you know, it's not.
You know.
It's the little townships in the little towns that are going to feel the hurt of it. Whereas in the big cities, it's nice because everybody has these big schedules, but it's the little people.
Did the state cover that cost?
They bought the equipment and they threw out. Yeah. There's a little bit they didn't, we had to get the nonpartisan, the ones that just had the millage on it. We have to, county has to cover that.
Oh.
And then some dairy supply that can be reused, but pretty much.
Oh.
Here, we'll see you in the future.
First thing they do.
That's all I got.
Can you bring public comment?
I've heard you talking about the, the food programs and whatnot. And when you include meat, uh, one of the problems we have in this U P area is there's only one certified processor, rainbow packing, which is somewhere out of Eskenaba. And if you got beef, if you don't put them in the schedule about a year or two ahead, uh, you can't get on their list. So if you, if you uh, wanted to produce beef and put it through a farmer's market, you really can't sell it unless it's stamp USDA approved. And there's only that one place in the U P. So uh, you can come up with a way to uh establish a meat processor in the central U P. Uh, Gupa, uh, growing U P agriculture has been pushing on that for a couple of years now. And uh, it's really hard to make any progress. They did a study and they suggested K I Sawyer was a good place. And that didn't really go anywhere. But uh, you can't really sell it, sell your beef, like my beef cattle, I can't sell them to a store or a restaurant unless it's got the, the federal stamp on it. And I believe right now there are no state approved which could stamp, state inspected and allow you to sell your beef. I'd say Marquette or Munising, uh, or the Food Quop in Marquette for these places. And uh, I don't believe there is any of that going on. So in your travels, if you can put some heat on somebody somewhere, uh, to service the U P farmers, a lot better. It'd be a lot better for, for people to buy from their neighbor or just down the road, uh, if they could to your restaurants and whatnot.
I can buy from you.
You can come to me.
Right.
Yes.
The problem becomes like with this program, but yes, and one of the, I believe it's the commissioner from, on the board from a nominee colony is, he's a beef rancher. So he, he very much, you know, he said, and then we had, there's another gentleman like Navy School Craft County that raises sheep. And he said, yeah, that's the same, the beef guy said, you know, I have to book months and months ahead of time. So if somebody says I want to buy this much, I make the appointment. If they drop out, I keep the appointment because I can't. So he runs into a storage issue. He says, sometimes, he said, I've got giant freezer. Sometimes they're full right to the door. Other times there's not a thing in them because of that.
Well, I do know Nate.
Give up, can't give up the, won't give up the appointments because they're too hard to get.
Nate McParland, who does business north of Kellyomet, I believe. He uh, I think it's uh, frozen beef. He has an outlet store there. He ships his cattle from there to Rainbow Packing. And he's got on the list somewhere along the way for so many animals in, on this date. And he makes sure he makes that deadline, but he transports it back and forth in order to sell it where he wants to. So it's a serious problem for, for anybody who wants to, to sell through the uh farmer's markets in Marquette, Eskenaba, Munising, anyplace. And you can't get it done because you don't have that stamp of approval. Like you said, you could go to a local farmer and ask them if you can buy a cow. And then, and then the local farmer could help you find a way to get it processed and get it in your freezer. But it's not government inspected. And then, then the local farmer could help you find a way to get it processed and get it in your freezer, but it's not government inspected either.
There's, there's a couple of butcher and meat cutters, but they're not.
They're not certified.
And I, I'm not sure there's very many downstate.
No, there's, apparently there's any problem from listening to the other. They have to have the inspector to be on the place. They have to have a separate bathroom, more than a second, for the inspector.
Yep.
They have to have their own bathroom, they can't share a bathroom with the other employees. And they have to pay him to be there.
Yeah.
The processor has to pay the inspector to be there. He has to pay the.
It's, it's hard.
Welcome to the federal.
We're getting us off track.
All right, anybody else comments?
Did we do staff? I skipped you guys.
I'll come back. That's where you are. Skipped over. Staff comments, Joel. All right, see, he didn't have any comments. Pam?
I think I'd go too.
Okay, I have comments.
I don't want to demand you on your last, uh, trial.
Thank you.
Yes.
We had tremendous success last week, you probably saw the news. Uh, child abuse is a, is a dangerous crime, and, uh, we decided to take a hard line on this and not make any kind of plea offers. And, uh, we're very happy with the results. We can always trust in the integrity of an outdoor county jury. Uh, we flew witnesses in from Nevada to attend the trial, and, um, so it was no small expense on behalf of the, our office, but at the same time, it was the right thing to do. Um, and I also want to thank, uh, we had a kind of a unique situation, first time I've ever heard of this, where, um, a prosecutor's office appointed an assistant prosecutor, um, special assistant prosecutor, her name is Roxanne Stein, huh?
Oh, boy.
She came in, um, completely pro bono and sat through the entire trial and cross-examined the defendant. We kind of made a strategic decision that, um, it would be more, uh, factual to have a woman cross-examine defendant, and unfortunately, there's gender dynamics that are involved in all these trials, but, uh, it worked brilliantly. Um, we were able to get the admissions of guilt that we wanted on cross-examination and, um, which was just something that you don't always get in a jury trial, so, um, special thanks to special assistant Roxanne Stein, huh, for her donation, um, to the citizens of Eldred County.
Is that any relation to you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we can tell what we're after. But, uh, she's a brilliant employer, uh, much better than me, so it was good to have her there, working, um, working side by side and, um, it's kind of neat because we, you know, she hears about these cases at home, uh, regardless. So it's like she's trying the case even if she's not there, and, um, we think that in the future, if she has the time, that we might bring her in on a few similarly situated cases. It's just another thing that, you know, we can offer our citizens, um, and, uh, it doesn't cost us anything right now. Thank you.
I have a question for that. Is this a Fanny, Fanny Willis case?
No. No, it's not. Our, uh, appointment agreement, uh, was authorized by the circuit court over a month ago in anticipation of this trial coming up. We kind of, my office got together and said, hey, the defense attorney, the defendant has two attorneys. And it was gonna look unfair, and, and we don't have the budget to bring in a whole nother attorney. So we kind of looked at different options of what we could do to bring in that second lawyer, just to bounce things up and look like we're, you know, even playing field, and, um, so, no, it was not a Fanny Willis situation, and, uh, I'm grateful for, uh, what occurred and the services she provided for us.
Well, thank her for us.
Thank you all.
Sheriff?
Just said, we, we as a law enforcement, um, we're, we're very thankful that Roxanne came in on that case, her, her, uh, redirection or cross-examination, and that was amazing, simply amazing, she's an amazing attorney. Um, so thank you, Rob, for bringing the citizens of the county the best. Um, I appreciate it as a sheriff. Um, one thing we didn't really talk about, and I'll just touch on it real quick, we got some absolute huge cases going on right now with prosecutor's office and Captain Waldron. Um, you will be reading about the cases, we're eventually, Rob and I are talking about press releases out very soon. But with their help, Captain Waldron's help, we got some huge cases going in. Um, we're doing a lot of great work right now, our, our law enforcement service is also across the county, working close with all the agencies, state police, the sheriff's office, everybody's working close together and, uh, you know, last but not least, and I'm done, I'm always a long-winded one, this is the one right here that's behind our annual service. This person sitting in my lot, Tina Waldron, is, she is the meat, the potatoes, the everything for us, so, uh, that's probably the first thing I should have said tonight, um, but this girl's amazing, and, uh, I, I heard Matt both, I appreciate both the morning and the evening. Sure.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah, thank you. Tina? Matt, heard you kicking butt.
Hover around down the agenda, but. If you think back on what the sheriff said, we do have some big cases coming down the pipe, and you, you will certainly read about them, but I want to give kudos to a prosecutor's office. I see what, what his desk looked like, and for a one prosecutor in office, this man takes all cases, doesn't matter if it's this big or this big, and he's not afraid to go to court on it, I'm just very thankful that are coming blessed with somebody that, that goes the extra mile like he does. We can put, we'll put in, we can put in one day work and he'll take it to a three-day trial if he has to, he's not afraid to do that.
He's gotta look at every case.
Every case, and he does.
And he's gonna be saying if it is or not.
And you can call him at four o'clock in the morning, he's not always happy, you can hear his iPhone. He's going there to the phone, so I just, I wanna, I wanna put a pad on the back for the prosecutor and his office. We are sustaining from the sheriff's office more high severity felony investigations than we have in the last five years right now, like pre-trial. So what that tells me is that we have an engaged police force with a lot of experience working on our local level. Very good stuff, very scary stuff for me because I see what could happen with some of these investigations, I'm like, oh, that's gonna be a lot of work. But, uh, at the same time, if they bring it in a ball, it looks good for the jury. That's all we're here for.
And real quick, just add on about Rob, this, my son's a state trooper, I'm up in the Gotti post, and it's, it's not an accident that a lot of the troops love to work our county, because if they get the drug dealer coming through Eldred County, Rob's gonna hammer him. Compared to other counties in the S O, not to other counties, that's just a compliment to our prosecutor, his office that we take these crimes serious, and, um, we have happy officers that like to work our county.
But there are the third wheel in that, like clog in that wheel, and that's the judge, so just another count, county elected official, so we've got to make sure our judges will put the hammer down to them and make good. That's the honorable, but I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty in the last few years, there's been big investigations, and those officers, undercover officers, want them, you know, for county, and most of it is because of him right there.
Yeah, I'm saying timeout because they're coming to our jail. I'm gonna go to Marquette County.
Yeah, I'd have embarrassed Rob.
Out of here. They can stay in the county, but they're going up. The vehicle. Yeah, if we could get them to pull them over just over into School Craft County. But they want to. Put a billboard on our county line, your face, and.
Yeah, thinking about that. It, well, I'd like to draw a map on the billboard, like.
Yeah.
You need to go down to two, over to. I keep taking that map down. Forty-one. I'm up forty-one, but don't go through Channery.
That's where those new steps.
You gotta cut a cross.
Is that the little area, you got like the map that says this is where you are, and then it says you should be here.
If you're carrying methamphetamine, you should be going through Rock and County Road six fifty-three or something.
I will just say that as far as that case just recently went, um, thank you.
Again, our office is not the, not the court of second chances when children are involved, it never will be. I believe you should be staying.
And I'll say this too, for Rob's, Roxanne's behalf, I would've got the pleasure to be the bailiff for when they swore her head for a lot. We had a big courtroom full that day, and people from the colleges and from across the country. And they were talking about all of Roxanne's accomplishments, and they went on, and they went on, I mean, they were amazing accomplishments. And it's all I could do is I, I said to Steve Link, I said, tell me Steinoff didn't marry up. It, it, that's a compliment to you, Rob, yeah, but it's true, it's like, I couldn't leave it, U S Olympic. Worked with U S Olympic teams and just amazing, and I'm thinking, Rob's? Good job, Rob. Did I say that? Because I love you, buddy.
So Rob, when you get them to where they're locked up, you're gonna put them in the jail, and the locks don't work?
I'm confident in our, um, corrections staff that whether the locks work or not, there's, we are safe.
That was just.
That was, that was a very political answer.
Becky, you got anything to say?
No.
No, no rating adjourned?
I'll support, it was over an hour.